Enjoy the bus ride, man right here.
Well, I think she's actually working in their office.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Why is the computer restarting?
It's magic.
You can't start commuting till the computer comes back up for you.
So don't turn us this one over, is it?
Just now, um.
Ruth.
You would have to send you that mail.
Yes.
Did you get any new shirts on? Student, did you get any new shirts on?
Was that more than just the agenda?
Uh, maybe I was.
Yes, you should have had a map.
I didn't get, the only thing I got was the agenda.
And you should have.
You know, we should all put your comments.
I only got one email from you.
I can order it right, do you want me to print it?
No, that's okay, I can, uh, I can look at it on my, if you just order it.
Yeah, I can do that right now.
I got the agenda, but it's just, it's here.
You said it out twice, one with a letter and then one with a.
I only got one email.
Oh, did you get the other one?
He's not on the packet.
No, no big deal. It's not for a company in the yard.
Did you receive it the time before that? Why did I really just copy her?
I, I think so, I think I did. I, I copied her email too, and I got, I got, uh, yeah, Wayne's wrong.
Yeah, I got, I sent you the email and got that.
I just copied her email. Right, that, that's where I got that original one wrong.
Yeah, did I send it out?
Well.
Hey.
Okay, it's four o'clock, would you all join me in the pleasure of releasing the flag of our country?
I have pleasure of releasing the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't entertain any public comments right now, personal communication correspondence. I had some, some public comments. Okay. Uh, it's been mentioned several times up here, and I noticed in the minutes here, that the airport board is referred to as an advisory. And I guess I'd like to address some of the documents that created the airport board, and some of the state laws that enabled that creation of airport. We, we were all sent copies of the, uh, of the documents Alicia sent about when I requested copies of the agreements, the joint operating agreements with the county.
Yeah, I've got some.
And I don't know if you had time to make a look at that one, and look at the, uh, you know, the state laws that, that they contain. And just kind of summary, that, uh, it's, it's clear from, from all those documents that indeed the city of Winemucca owns the Winemucca Airport. There's nothing skewed about that. However, in nineteen sixty-four, the city was, was apparently seeking help with some anticipated expenses of the airport that they were suddenly gonna get back from the FAA. They didn't want to incur all of the expenses themselves, so they entered into an agreement with the county. Uh, and that agreement was made pursuant to NRS four nine six point two two oh, which titled is Agreements of Public Agencies for Joint Action. Uh, that agreement created the Winemucca-Humboldt Airport. The board, and that board, in, in that agreement, it, it says the board shall have the powers granted to joint boards under the Municipal Airport Act, NRS four nine six point two three oh. Note that the powers are granted by the state statute, not by the agreement. NRS four nine six point two three oh grants the following powers. To plan, acquire, establish, develop, construct, enlarge, improve, maintain, equip, operate, regulate, protect, and police the airport, and any other facilities appertaining to the airport. The board may exercise on behalf of its constituent public agencies, that is, the city of Winemucca and the county of Humboldt, uh, may exercise on behalf of all the powers of each, subject to the limitations in this section, and the limitations are listed. And those limitations include, the airport board cannot spend more than the budget. Okay, it's pretty straightforward. If there are imminent domain proceedings to be instituted, they have to be instituted by the, the governing bodies, not the airport board. So you're gonna condemn some, some property to take it over, that's, that's up to the city and county to institute there. Uh, and any regulations that the board adopts for the management of the airport, so things like traffic patterns and where things are gonna, where, where things are gonna go, vehicle traffic, just the airport regulations, uh, those have to be approved by the governing bodies. In addition, the airport board cannot dispose of, sell any of the airport or its facilities without the consent of the governing bodies. So the airport board can't sell the airport unless the county and the city agrees. However, this is explicit in this chapter four ninety-six. The airport board may, without such consent, enter into contract, lease, or other arrangements without the consent, consent of the city or the county. The, the board is an autonomous board. In a nineteen seventy-four amendment, that, that went well for about ten years, and then I don't know what happened in nineteen seventy-four, but in a nineteen seventy-four amendment, the original agreement, uh, the governing bodies eliminated all of the powers of four ninety-six point two three oh. That's the amendment where they said, any action taken by the airport board has to be held in abeyance for thirty days, and if the city or the, or the county vetoes it, then it's, that's it, it's vetoed. Then in nineteen seventy-five, there was another amendment of the original agreement to increase the board membership from three to five. Okay? Then in nineteen seventy-eight, a, a, another amendment in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-eight, the governing bodies reaffirmed that the board had the powers granted by statute under NRS four ninety-six point two three oh. They also defined, redefined a quorum. The airport, the original airport board was three members, two made a quorum, and the new airport board is five members, three made a quorum. So. And I, I guess, what I'm saying here is that the state of Nevada gave the powers to the airport to do these certain things. And with good reason. If, for instance, a, a, as an example, I remember here, three months ago, we, we had before the airport board a, a lease, a new lease, that the airport board approved, and subsequently went to the city council, and the city council vetoed it. That's in direct conflict with this one issue in, in this, in this NRS four ninety-six, that without such consent, the airport board can enter into those agreements. So, the point is, the city vetoed it, the county did nothing. The county is, in essence, agreed with the airport board, so the county and the city disagree on that issue. This is a joint agreement. It's not the city running the airport, it's not the county running the airport, it's a joint agreement. So, y- you can see how, that's, that's gonna be very awkward if the city and county don't agree on a, on, on an issue, then what, what are we to do? That's why the airport board has the authority. Another point, in any of these documents that I mentioned, there is no mention of an advisory board, none of that. So, I guess, the question is, can a concurrent resolution of two municipalities trump a, a Nevada revised statute? So, if it can do that for four ninety-six, can it also do it for NRS two forty-one? You know what NRS two forty-one is? Anybody? The open meeting law. I don't think the city can say, well, we're not, that doesn't affect us. Or the county can't say that. So I believe that the way the airport board has been operated is incorrect. The airport board is a, is a decision-making board that has authority. The authority is granted under the state law. And, you know, the, the previous city manager came to an airport board meeting one night, I think it was before we were on the airport board, and told the airport board that, that the airport board was not an advisory body, it was actually created by the legislature in this NRS four ninety-six, and that they had decision-making authority. Since then, for, for whatever, I, I, I think it's not ill-intentioned that this has happened, but it's happened. And I think it needs to be corrected, that, that, that the city and the county need to recognize that the airport board has the powers given to it by the state statute. And one other thing that I, that I noticed, and I'm not sure, I believe that the city and county are sharing expenses fifty-fifty?
Operational expenses, yes.
That's, I believe the city owes the county some money, 'cause that was never amended. The original agreement said sixty-four. That was never changed.
It's been changed in the cost share agreement that's approved each year by the city.
But it's not, it's, it's not been changed in amendment, in a concurrent resolution by the city and county to amend, I mean, that's, all that needs is to be done.
Just like this.
Right. But it hasn't been done. So, the term, I think, again, I, I don't know where, where we go, but.
Well, I think we need any clarification.
From legal counsel.
Yeah, or, or, or higher.
Or higher, whether it goes to the state, if we can't come to a resolution there, but on hybrid, the same information that Brad has. It does sound like we are supposed to be autonomous, but we're, we're not, for an advisory board in name for this no act. And, and part of this also, I wrote it there, we have not been doing our annual budget reviews or election for officers, and I didn't realize we're supposed to be electing officers annually, or reaffirming, like chairman, for instance. And that's probably something we should correct going forward, I would think, just so we're on the right book.
Well, the terms are four years after the initial.
No, the term, in the agreement, in the, the original agreement, the term of the chairman is for one year.
Right, I got that, but I'm talking about the terms of the members, it's initially been, it's every four years.
Yeah, I'm talking about. You're talking about the world elected chair.
Yeah, vice chair. And, uh, as you know, you've been on it twenty-seven years, so.
Yeah, maybe not quite that many. I'm only twenty-six.
Twenty, twenty-six, yeah, nineteen ninety seven.
Yeah, lots of year.
So, to me, it seems like we need to clean up procedures and make sure to be quick these days.
May I make a public comment? Christina Patterson for the record. In line of this information, I would like to propose, for the record, as a constituent, that everything having to do with the airport be halted until everything can be legally sorted out and done correctly.
I think the board, I would take that under advisement, appreciate your comment on that, and I think the, the board will probably seek legal counsel and, uh,
I would say.
But I don't think the board.
For the record, I would ask that it be put on the agenda that the board decide on that.
All right, thanks for your comment.
I think, um, clarifying that with legal counsel would be a great idea, Brad.
That'd be for sure. And I think, you know, we, we need to get the county involved in this, 'cause the county is a partner in this, in this thing. It's not been treated as a partner, other than we'll accept your fifty percent, uh, but we're gonna veto this, this action by the board, and that didn't go to the county.
And then if we could do that by the next meeting, I would think we can have an agenda for the things to do.
So we can, do we need to agendize the election of officers for the board?
Uh, we can, yeah, sure.
So we should put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and is it, is it possible to get some sort of a budget to?
Yeah, we have the.
She has the budget, she just hasn't given it out.
It'll be submitted this week to the.
I mean, we used to get one, it was always a tentative kind of thing. And, and it gave us a new bu, next year's budget and, and previous year's budget and where we were at on.
We know what we have, money's.
I mean, it was nothing.
The board has been a little remiss in some of the, probably the administrative details, but I'm sure we can clean that up, which is what we should do, so we'll do it. Any other comments for people online or in the gallery here? If not, we'll move on to minutes for correction or approval, as all the board members had a chance to review the minutes. Any corrections or, it was back in February, I believe.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
I could, I could put a motion on the floor, hold favorite.
Aye.
Aye. Any warrants for review or approval? Okay. Business items for discretion and action. First one on here is the, uh, lease pack, Rocky Phoenix intent to sell, approval discussion for possible action.
I think you can still sit there, I think.
Yeah, you can still sit there.
You can, oh no.
We're gonna do this later, but.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Rocky, tell us what you're gonna do, you wanna, you're gonna sell your hanger and I'll read this thing off. So that, you submitted a, uh, my glasses, I'm a bit hard here.
So I intend to sell the hanger.
Right.
To Dr. Stone. My original, for the original fifteen-year lease on that hanger in that lot is, will end, I guess, in the gym. So, the intent would be for him, Dr. Stone, to take over, but they knew the lease agreement. But I would assume the standard lease for him, if he would come, it would help. Um, hopefully, time will come.
In regards to that, the first agenda item, staff recommends, the ci, the city, county does not want to, to, to provide a refusal.
Right, yes, so first part is that.
And, which leads right into the second agenda item, you're gonna, you wanna sell it to Derek Sterling.
Correct. He'll be a good tenant out there, he has a couple of things, uh, if he wants to move, they're in the last couple, we, uh, moved out, yeah, so.
So, so we wouldn't just assign the second half of the lease to, again, would it be a holding lease?
It would be holding lease because it's a conditional renewal anyway at the end of that first date.
Okay, okay, so renegotiating.
Yeah, so the, the first action that needs to be taken is that the board needs to waive the first right of refusal to purchase Rocky's hanger.
We need a motion on that.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we waive the right of first refusal to allow for Mr. Phoenix to sell to a third party, and terminate.
Second, hold favorite.
Aye.
Okay. On the agenda two. A new lease, under the new lease program, or the new lease that's setting up with the city attorney, would be for fifteen years.
And the rate for twenty twenty-three is twenty-one cents per square foot, a standard lease table.
This is a different number, is, is there any significance to that, lease tract E two versus lease tract six?
Keep it guessing, I don't know where it is.
It's, it's E two.
It's E two.
It's E two, it's not six.
It's not six, okay.
It's E two.
That must have been a typo.
Yeah.
Must have been.
So just be, uh, need some action to enter into a new lease with Dr. Sterling under the standard.
Do we need to hear from him, or?
Uh, well, we'll, as long as he's using it for aeronautical purposes, but if he s- signs the lease, then he'll be held to that anyway.
Okay, I would, I would make a motion that, uh, that we draft a, a new lease with standard terms for, uh, Dr. Sterling, for the lease tract E two.
Put a motion on the floor.
Hold favorite.
Aye.
Aye, right.
Who did a second?
Oh, I seconded, I'm sorry.
Okay, you can come back over here now.
Okay, we're going to project updates. Uh, snow removal equipment, Mike, you wanna give us an update on that?
I know it's a good one.
Yes, it's, uh, getting better all the time. Your truck has gone through the pre-delivery inspection at the International Dealership in Reno, uh, and they are coordinating scheduling, getting it into the professional radio shop to have the aviation band radio installed. Um, it's a company that the Reno Plow Airport used extensively for cops and R R equipment, so I know that they do good work. So the aviation band radio will be installed, then the intent is that, uh, staff from the International Dealership will actually drive the truck to Winemucca, and the hanky sales rep will meet us there, uh, install the plow, inspect the plow, confirm operation of the plow, and ultimately, uh, I will help you folk, and Patrick and I will help you accept the vehicle, um, and then we'll start learning how to use it. I don't have a specific timeline, it all hinges on the radio shop, getting the truck into the shop, and how long it'll take them to do the install. The truck was set up at the factory for a radio installation, so it should be relatively painless, but I've been wrong on that before.
And the hanky rep is in Reno or someplace that he, he can be out here pretty quickly?
Well, we're gonna coordinate it at least a week in advance, 'cause he has to make travel arrangements from Kansas City.
Okay.
So maybe by the end of April, it's pretty close?
That's probably an optimistic maybe, but I would say certainly by mid-May.
Before the next winter.
Yeah, you will have it before the first snow flies, but.
This year's, not next year's.
Yeah, not, not, not a continuation of this winter, but next winter.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one question, you were out there when they unloaded that blade, is that gonna fit through the garage door in the?
Yes, it will.
Will?
'Cause I was out there with the, uh, Public Works kid Howard.
Yeah.
It will hook onto the body of the truck, and it'll articulate, and when it goes in, it could go in frontwards or backwards, and there's room for it to turn.
There's enough for us sitting there, so we don't have to take it off and on, so, yeah, that's been checked out, so, because what's rewind, it's fourteen feet.
And when, you know, and when we get the truck and it's all put together and we do things like get it in and out of the shed and such, um, we can kinda work together to come up with what you think is basic operating procedures, in other words, is it a one-man operation to get it in and out of the shop, or do a second set of eyes help you from, yeah, me? We'll, we'll figure it out, I, I don't think it'll be a challenge, I think by, we, I remember when we were first talking about this, we went there and looked at it, measured the door, talked about articulating the plow and things like that, and, uh, it's not unusual to have to do that to get it in, so I, I think we're gonna be solid, but once it's there, we'll verify all that.
Yeah, if we get a ground guide, we'll get a ground guide, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mike. G A apron hardstand, you wanna talk about that in a minute?
Yep, we're still just in a one-year warranty period on that project, um, so no updates on it.
And the reconstruction, redesign, Armstrong's still at work on that. Uh, section one sixty-three determination has been received from the FAA, had indicated that no legal authority, uh, no legal authority to, over the proposed project on one seventy-seven parcel. You got some insight on that?
Uh.
Other than, and I'm sure Mike does too.
Um, that's basically it, I can read you the determination. Or just the summary of the determination, is that page as long?
Is anybody? I, I thought the, the one sixty-three was to cover those little portions, corners of the airport that wasn't airport industrial property, that the roadway crossed on the way in and out, not the one seventy-seven acre parcel. One seventy-seven is part of the industrial part.
Correct, the one seventy-seven, yes, technically not part of the airfield, and the, the one sixty-three discusses both, I guess. So, a section one sixty-three review, if there, the FAA looks at if a project could affect the airport, and if it could affect the airport, then they have some authority over it. Um, and they have to find, there's very specific findings that they have to look at. And so they look at the overall project, the proposed transloading facility, and they make a determination as to whether they have any authority over that or not. Um, so for the transloading facility on the one hundred and seventy-seven acre parcel, they found that they do not have any authority. There is, it's still some authority related to the access road, as you indicated, over the the other parcel that is the, the airport parcel.
Private property.
Yeah.
Which, is there somebody else that owns?
Then there's another private parcel.
Yeah, and that's still a negotiation with those private people.
Are there any conditions on the determination?
Are there any conditions on the determination from the FAA?
Um, there is, um... I'm not sure what you mean by conditions, but obviously we still have to follow our grant assurances, which there are a few listed in there specifically. Um, and there are, uh, the conditions related toward the access road, if the, if the project continues, there are certain things that must be done for that access road, so they list some of those in here.
Is it possible to get a copy of the one sixty-three determination then, so it's clear for everybody?
Yes, I believe you've made that request and it's being processed.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
You may, go ahead.
For clarification, uh, with what Alicia is talking about is, the parcel that was, the one sixty-three was requested for is, on your airport layout plan, is identified as non-aeronautical, and that's, that, I, that classification of non-aeronautical use is what triggers the one sixty-three review, because it's already identified as non-aeronautical use. The challenge, uh, with, for the FAA invokes is the fact that the road that will serve the non-aeronautical use crosses a parcel of land that was identified as aeronautical, even though you're not impinging on the use of the facility as aeronautical because it's on that very north portion of it, but that, that's, that's the differentiator where the one sixty-three comes in versus a full FAA review. If it were full, a full aeronautical use, they would be much more involved in it, but the one sixty-three determination basically said that they lack the legal authority to approve or disapprove the changes because it's classified non-aeronautical.
Correct. Thanks, Mike.
Um...
Any other questions?
As it came upon with the, the question of the authority of the airport board, um, if the airport board does actually have more authority, then wouldn't the airport board have discussed and voted on the use of this one hundred and seventy-seven acre parcel?
No. That, that parcel doesn't belong to the airport.
Yes, it does. It's on the airport. FAA would have nothing to do with it if it wasn't.
It belongs to the city.
Does anybody else have anything to say about that?
It doesn't belong to the airport.
It belongs to the airport, the city and the county.
County paid for half.
Yep. I'm a taxpaying citizen in the county. The county owns half of that.
There, there's gonna be a joint meeting on Monday, and at that joint meeting, it's between city council, county commission. I believe at the beginning, the agenda's still being worked on, but I believe at the beginning of that meeting, both the district attorney and the city, uh, city attorney are going to discuss the authority over that one hundred and seventy-seven acre parcel, which, which...
I saw that, I live. That's a, that's a joint county and city council meeting on the seventeenth.
Yes.
It'll be at the courthouse, yes.
But what I'm saying is, when you go back to the original workings of all of this, it wasn't done properly according to the NRS to begin with.
I guess maybe, maybe I could, could I get it together, just, I'd make a request, and maybe we can get it together before that meeting. The original airport boundaries extended out to Westmoreland. It's, it's, I mean, it's certainly out to where the, the blocks are with the airport sign on it and the Franklin Field thing on it. That's on the original airport. That's now designated as industrial park. So at some point, that portion of the industrial park was cut out of the airport.
Illegally?
The original airport went clear to Westmoreland.
Or what, what was it, where it is, but, all I'm saying is...
Halfway up section fifty.
Unlegally, correct.
I, let's, let's, one thing at a time. So, that was part of the original airport. At some point, somehow, that became industrial park. Are there some documents somewhere? Is there some documentation of...
I've been trying to get public records requests done, but I've been blocked.
Creating that industrial park, cutting it out of the airport?
It's been done illegally.
Or should be a mount, meets and bounds description of, this is, this part of the airport is now the industrial park, and it's under the sole control of the city, but I'm, I'm guessing there is no such document.
This is where, as a constituent, I would like this to be investigated properly, since it seems to be that there were property exchanges that were done illegally.
They weren't done illegally.
Well, is, is, is there a document, though?
Can you show me?
From Carwell and Carrion, yes, we have documented. From Carwell and Carrion.
And what statute was used for that?
That's the ground that was given to Carwell and Carrion. What about the ground that was leased to Loom? Uh, and those, by the way, those lease payments went to the airport.
They did go to the airport, yeah.
Which tells me that that's appertaining to the airport.
So actually Carrion and Carwell should be, send the money to the airport as a lease?
They got it for free.
Yeah, that, that wasn't for the city to actually decide, and the money, any money for the non-aeronautical use of airport land is supposed to go to the airport for revenue generating.
Go ahead.
We're on project status report.
Yeah.
We're talking about the project.
We'll continue us on for, when they have the joint meeting.
Well, if we can get, if we can, though, if we can find some documents, that, I mean, you readily had those documents on the, the old history of the airport. And there should be something that created, who cut the airport up and made the industrial.
I know it says industrial park, and it says airport. Everybody calls it airport.
Not in the, not in the nineteen forty-four map that's posted out in the, in the, uh, FBO building. It says airport proper.
We can sort it out. Okay, moving on. Loom site? Any ideas on, anybody want to?
No new permanent tenant, but, uh, Western Nevada College is going to be holding some CBL classes there, so the, the city, county, and, um, local businesses are having a really hard time finding CBL drivers, uh, because of the new requirements for training. Um, and so, Western Nevada College has a CBL program, they were looking for a site to hold their classes. But Loom and, Loom site is a really big paved site, and they have a building out there that they can use as a classroom. Um, so we're gonna try holding some CBL classes out there on a temporary basis.
So they'll set a course out there for them to...
They will, they'll bring cones out there, um, and it'll all be within the fenced area, and, um, I believe Butch Gordo's gonna be the instructor, um, and, uh, they're gonna take four, four to five at a time, and so we're hoping to get some people's CBLs.
How much will it cost for a private person to collect? Will, will there be some place online for people to sign up?
Uh, Western Nevada College, so about signing up, I'm not sure. Right now, it's all being coordinated through Michelle Hammond. Um, but Western Nevada College has received two different grants, um, for tuition, Waker basically, or Financial Lake. Um, so, uh, they have to fill out the paperwork, and I believe that the classes will be covered if they meet the criteria, but I'm not sure what all of the criteria is.
Do they know about when they might start?
The first class is gonna start April twenty-four.
Moving on, PLM update on the project there?
No new updates since our meeting, um, February sixth, so still waiting for, the PLM was going to make some revisions to the lease document, and I, I haven't received those.
Alicia, when was the start of the warranty on the...
Uh, it was, it was in the...
Around November, yeah?
Yeah, in the fall.
Yeah, should have been, ended up in November, November. So, maybe November, December this year, it'll be one year up, yeah.
Is the sports car club still scheduled to come?
Yes, they are still planning to come, um, the week...
Twentieth and twenty-first, I believe.
Yes, the week before Memorial Day.
Yeah. Okay, Navades?
After our last meeting, I went out and I turned off the VinoArt completely. Um, our NOTAM is still effective right now. They have extended it to August eighth, I believe, is that for the decommission? For the decommission, so as soon as this one gets closer, it expires next Thursday, I will extend that out. Um, they wanted a number for the decommission, and we have a, the Airbus one, so I just have to call them in the meantime until it gets decommissioned, um, and we'll go right in after, you know. Oh, wait, the DME, FAA will be out here next week, we will have a temporary power bump. They sent out the email for that today, um, on Thursday, the twentieth. I'm not sure how long that will go, but we will see, and, um, they will not be done after next week, it doesn't sound like, but this is just the next step to getting some of their equipment up and going.
And it will affect the CAP building as well, the airfield lining, right, and...
Yeah, and it will affect the main powerhouse, so probably not, I don't, you guys, or CAP isn't out around Thursdays, so...
Well, I, I can get out there, I can, Ken couldn't open it, but I can get out there.
Yeah, I, I just don't know that you need to, um, I guess was my point.
I think you can get in, well, you can let them in too, so.
So, um, and I will double check our generator next week, after the last power bump, uh, Ken Howard was out there today with me. We had some issues with it, the battery tender went crazy, and so, uh, we got that up and going again. It was still turning on up until last Friday, um, as far as turning the lights on, but it is going again. So I will double check that, we kinda got some basic, basic, uh, troubleshooting things for what happened with the battery tender, so. Then FBO, um, it's been a quiet winter, nasty weather, so we're just kinda gearing up for summer and...
With this good weather, maybe you have some more business.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yes.
That's always ideal, so...
Anything else? That's it?
Thank you, okay.
Uh, Civil Air Patrol, I talked to the commander, and they're, they're struggling. They had an inspection, they passed, but it wasn't good. They're may go dormant or go inactive for a year, I don't know yet, but I will keep the board posted on that. Membership is, like, down to nil, two cadets and a couple seniors, so they're faunting, they're not doing well at all, and, uh, but we'll see what happens. And...
Mr. Chairman, are you still a member of the organization?
I am, I'm taking care of the facility portion of it as a logistics officer, but, and there's nothing really happening out there, and it's, it's a shame, but we don't wanna lose the charter of the facility by any means, so. It could come back.
Is CAP in general across the country up or down, or what, what's the status of it?
Kinda struggling, getting pilots and getting people to vol- it's all volunteer, there's no money. You don't get paid, there's strictly, um, volunteer services, search and rescue, and cadets, and aerospace stuff, and getting people involved. You have to have seniors, members, to be able to teach cadets, so. Just like any other organization, everybody's strugg- all volunteer groups are struggling, so, and there are no exceptions to the rules, so. With that, I have nothing else. Any board members have anything to add? Go ahead, Rocky.
Yeah, public comment, I believe the audience is trying to get a word in.
If nothing else from the board members, public comments?
I have a comment. Can we get an exact boundaries of, of the industrial park and the airport for the meeting?
Uh, I can work on, I don't know, I've looked.
It's such a great area, I just, I'd like to see a blue book from that department, make sure it be helpful.
You folks have any more comments?
Um, I would just like to say, as a citizen of the county, that I think things with the airport board need to be looked into more in depth by a, a unbiased third party, and, and have an actual audit done of, of all the legal dealings and any financials. It, this is, this is really concerning, especially as somebody who lives near the airport and is, cares about the airport, and wants to see this community prosper.
Well, certainly take, take that into consideration. I'm sure the board would probably, uh, would wanna do that too. As you know, this board's pretty transparent, so we'll, uh, we'll pursue that. Appreciate your comments.
Yeah, like, like Brad brought up, the, the airport board, it should be in control of the airport, and it, and any airport property that's owned by the airport, that's purchased by the city and county, the airport should be getting the lease for that, that's how the airport grows. That's what that, uh, the industrial park is for, on the industrial...
Using that revenue to improve on the airport.
It's for the airport, and it's not for city or county. And there, and there's documentation, it's in FAA laws and regulations, there's a lot of stuff that's been hidden from you guys.
Well, we'll certainly look into it, appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
If any thing, anybody have anything else?
If we have that, put it on the next agenda, also, we just have it, until we get, till we all understand what all the powers are supposed to be doing.
We'll give it a project update.
Could we have something actually where it's on the agenda, so it's public? 'Cause project updates actually don't go out to the public. They're just put down on the agenda as, as updates. There's nothing about specifics. This is how, when the thing with the one seventy-seven acres ended up going without the public knowing for so long, because it was never on the agenda.
And the airport board didn't vote on it.
I mean, this is, this is why we're in this, the situation we're in now.
These are stamped board project updates, just like any other board.
Yes, and I'm saying that because of the importance of this going on, it needs to be put on the actual agenda, not a project update.
It's on our agenda, I, every, every month, but every meeting.
Project updates are, but the explicit issue, the...
Well, all the pins have been put about it, agenda item, so.
But that's, that's how you legally are covered with the public being told about it, 'cause if it's just on a project update, there's nothing that goes out to the public about that specific thing.
On the agenda that you can read, it's part of the public, you can get a copy of it, it's on there every month, every meeting.
But that's just project update, it's not specifying.
It's on the agenda.
Project updates is on the agenda.
Yeah, all the updates on the agenda.
But what's in project updates?
She's, she's on the agenda, it's specifically on clarification of the powers of the board, is that correct?
This should all be public, yeah, I mean, this is something that, yes, we need to have it on the agenda, so the public actually sees it on an agenda. When it's all done with, under public updates, that's why things weren't found out about.
Public comments, not updates.
So, for the agenda item, we're looking at, for the powers of the board, is that the recurring agenda item?
I think that was the original tip on that review, right, is that what you have?
Yep, that was what, that was right to discuss, that's, certainly a first step.
Okay. We'll do it. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. We'll adjourn. All right. Adjourn.
Bye, everyone, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
So, I mean, uh, I was thinking...
Ten, ten thirty.
Ten thirty at the courthouse?
Yeah, it's still in the works, but, so on Wednesday, the agenda will be posted, but we think, we think...